Hello and welcome to our third hashtag we connect webinar series. I am Jenna Woodland, the superintendent of Evergreen Park. I am so humbled and honored to be here with our third session. We have a very special guest today that I will be introducing in a split moment. Just to reconnect with you today, it is our goal to ensure that we're providing you the opportunity to connect with all the things that we're doing in Evergreen Park. As a district, we have gone through a very specific and detailed strategic planning process that will allow us to share information as to how we put our plan into action. If I've heard anything in Evergreen Park, it's that we want to ensure that we have a strategic plan that really allows us to have detailed action within our community that's directly tied to our goals. Just a reminder, we are filming these live every time we have them. In the event you have any technical difficulties, please just re-sign on to the link that was provided with you today or for you today. Also, these will all be pre-recorded and recorded and shared in the community and all hosted on our website. So, thank you to Dan Lee, who is helping us drive our PowerPoint in the background and host our Zoom webinar as well. As a reminder, we've had a variety of strategic planning goals that we've led and facilitated. And our five goal areas are culture, communication, curriculum and instruction, diversity, equity and inclusion, and students support services. Today, however, though, we have a very special guest and that special guest is Ms. Colleen Klimzak. Ms. Colleen Klimzak serves as our board president and she was an active participant in our strategic planning process. And our goal for today is to share with you what is board work and what is not board work, a very fun and creative theme. But before we get to that point, I would like to introduce you Ms. Colleen Klimzak. Thank you so much, Colleen, for being with us tonight.
Thank you so much for having me. I am very excited to have this conversation. I, I get asked this actually in general, you know, I don't think everybody understands what board work really is. I don't even know if I did six years ago when I came on as a board member. But I did know I wanted to be part of the good work and I just wanted to shed a little light on that this evening. So, thank you so much for having me. I'm great. Very grateful we have this, this series to, to share information with our community.
Perfect. So, I would love the opportunity just to introduce you and a little bit about who you are as a person because I know you're much more than a board president. So, who are you and how can we get to know you a little bit better?
Awesome. Well, thank you. So, in front of us, here on the slide, I am a six-year board member. So, I was elected for the first time in seventeen and then I was re-elected for another four-year term in 2021. And we will talk about elections in a little bit today as well. So, I'm excited to kind of explain that process to folks. Before I was on the board, I was always active in the community. Once my children joined, you know, became school age, I wanted to be a part of their educational environment. So, I was one of the founding members for the education foundation here in Evergreen Park. I was on the Southwest School and at the time, Central Junior High School PTAs when they were PTAs, not boosters. And then I was also a leader for a local Cub and Boy Scout troop and pack. So, I've always been working with the students here in Evergreen Park. I do have three adult sons who attended and graduated from D124 schools. I did the math on my commute today and I was in the district as a parent for fifteen years. So, from kindergarten for my oldest to eighth grade graduation for my youngest. And they are now twenty-five, twenty-two and eighteen years old. So, I also do own my own business. I've been a professional organizer, certified professional organizer here in Evergreen Park for twenty years here. So, I'm a member of the chamber and, and do a lot of presentations and things at local venues. And I also am a liturgical musician. So, I serve in two Evergreen Park parishes in that capacity as well. Both Queen of Martyrs and Mostill Redeemer. So, so yeah, that's a little bit about me. Thank you for asking.
So, you are a busy lady. Let's just put it that way.
I am. I like it. It's great. It's all good things I want to be involved in. So, I'm happy to be here. Yeah.
You're dedicated to service and we appreciate your opportunity to really dig deep into what board work is and what board work. So, let's go ahead and get started on that. So, when I went into the superintendency, I always heard about this word board governance. And when I think about the word governance, I think about a variety of different like big picture concepts, policies, procedures, guidelines, law. But if you had to describe what board governance is from the perspective of a board member, what does that look like for you?
Got it. It is all those things and more. So, I will use the analogy that we receive in our initial board training. So, we do have to actually get trained up as board members. So, every new board member goes through an orientation to the district of, you know, ins and outs of District 124, obviously. And then we also are required by the state to participate in a training, a two-day training for all new board members with other board members, which is really kind of cool. It's always nice to meet people from other districts. And we learn a lot about how a board actually works and governance is one of the first things we talk about. So, we are told in our training that the board governs and guides. But again, what does that actually mean, right? So, the analogy in our intro to board work training from the IASB, which is the Illinois Association of School Boards, is one of a ballroom. So, if there's any other board members hearing this, they all know the analogy. So, the board stands in the balcony of the ballroom is the analogy as the example. So, the point is we are overseeing, we are watching over the dancers on the dance floor, which is our community and stakeholders. So, we are there to watch the movement, we might notice trends, we look for celebrations and for stumbles. And then we take action accordingly. So, we kind of take in all of that information and then we, we act on it. So, our action is to set the standards and the work for the district, like the strategic plan, right? So, you know, we kind of, that, that helps to order the steps of everybody involved. So, Dr. Woodland and her role as superintendent is responsible for being the go-between between the board up in the balcony and the stakeholders down on the dance floor. So, again, the board sets the standards. We base those standards on a lot of input, input from all of our stakeholders and authorities, like the state governing bodies and things like that. And then we make sure that those standards are enacted with fidelity. So, to bring it on down, right, to a, a, a building level. So, I could be in classrooms occasionally and I actually love it when I get to do school tours with Dr. Woodland. And I get to visit and I get to see our students and let our teachers know that I support them. But my role is not to stay in the classroom. My role is to, again, govern and guide and we absolutely trust our classroom teachers to be the people in the classroom. So, as like, as much as I like to visit, I don't stay. And so, you know, that's a big, that's a definition and we kind of need to remember that. That's one of those what is and is not board work questions, right? Yeah. And really, if anybody asks, I say that my role is to listen and listen and listen, right? Right? For example, like, and Dr. Woodland was there. So, last month in January, I listened at a union meeting. I listened to all of our principals in a principal meeting. And then I reported what I heard back to my fellow board members at a board meeting. And then I listened to them give feedback to that information as well. So, we're also required to listen to legal advice. So, very often the question we ask when we have to communicate or, you know, have something that comes up. We don't have to be the experts in educational law because we have experts in educational law. So, again, that helps us to remember what is and is not board work. And, you know, we need to know, like, you know, most recently masking, right? So, what was and wasn't legal. Thank goodness. Thank goodness, that's a year ago. But we had to listen and we had to take that legal advice and, and, and act on it accordingly. So, yeah, and since we're talking about listening, sorry, Dr. Woodland, I'm going to put this in here. I want to mention here a guiding principle that we often refer to as well, and that is chain of command. So, yes, right? So, chain of command refers to authority and reporting relationship, which is a fancy word for communication. And this is per, per our board policy 330. And we're going to talk about policies in a little bit too. And honestly, that is the first question in my mind when any district convers- district topic comes up in conversation, right? So, I really do have to listen and also determine, is this something that's board work? Or is this something that someone else is going to have a much better chance of being able to explain more fully, right? So, I remember I actually learned this as a parent because we are told as parents, there's a chain of command for parents to follow. So, the first chain of, or first link, first channel in communications is our student's classroom teacher, right? And if we don't hear, or if we, we, if, if the teacher and the parent can't necessarily come up with solutions for the student, then maybe then the next step would be the principal. But we have to go through that in order, because the way to make change is in your child's classroom versus jumping all those layers and going straight to like the board about something that we know nothing about yet. So, you know, truly, it's, it's classroom teacher, then principal, then superintendent, then board. There's a chain of command for employees to feel empowered and heard and be able to, their first line of communication is their immediate supervisor, right, then the superintendent, then the board. At a recent DEI committee meeting, a question came up about curriculum. And while I can speak in generalities about our curriculum, the better person to ask is our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Education and Technology. And that's what we did because luckily she was at the meeting with us, which is really, really great. But, you know, and the other part in the policy says these channels should be followed and no levels should be bypassed except in unusual situations. So, you know, really, we want to talk to the person that's right there at the level that we can actually see change. And that's a great reason to stick with the chain of command.
I always like to say to the most impactful person is really truly the classroom teacher. They're the ones who interact with our students the most. Oftentimes, I'm in a similar position, Colleen, in which I have to say, you know, have we talked to the classroom teacher and what can we really do to make sure that that child can be successful? Because that is always everyone's goal and intention. The goal at the board level, it's the goal at my level is that we want students to have access to education and that they're successful in their environment.
Yeah. If you've ever watched or attended a board meeting, you may have heard me say in public comments that we don't really respond to public comments at board meetings. And that's not because we don't welcome public comments in board meetings. It's that very often, the board is not the person or department to respond to the question. So, it's very important, you know, for chain of command. We don't necessarily know the answers, but we know who does. And so, we will make sure that we get the information. But again, we don't respond at board meetings for a number of reasons. But very often it's because there are other people that are absolutely better equipped to answer a question. I can answer a finance question, but you'd be much better off getting it from our Director of Business Services than you would be from a, an answer from me. So, I just wanted to put that out there as well because that's important for board governance at the root, really.
Great. Well, thank you so much. We're going to switch on to policy. So, you mentioned policy.
Oh, yeah.
And I view my job every day is to enact board policy and to do that with integrity and good ethics and to ensure that we're following them with fidelity. And so, board policy really drives all of our work in a school district. And so, just a big picture overview, all of our board policies are accessible on our website. And they must be board approved. And so, oftentimes you'll see Colleen have to read all of these numbers, right, in a board meeting. And then we also have a board policy committee because we have a committee structure here at Evergreen Park. And two board members sit on the board policy committee, but there's also times in which I might bring a policy to all board members in which we can discuss in closed session. So, from the perspective of a board member, describe why board policy is so important to the board and how you really view that from your position.
Got it. So, I don't currently serve on the policy committee, but I have served on a policy committee. And I think it really, it's very, serving on the policy committee really helps you to understand the process and how things, how ideas make it into our policy. I mean, it, it exists online. So, it's not really a book, but you know, how, how that happens. And so, just again, all of our policies are available on the district website under the Board of Education tab. And all of them must be approved from, my gosh, and policies can cover everything, anything from student behavior to family medical leave for our teachers, right? Like, everything falls under board policy. And our handbook reflects policy. So, I wanted to kind of bring that together too. So, the nuts and bolts is every other month, we get this very thick packet of information from the IASB regarding new policies or changes to existing policies. And those changes or new policies reflect new legislation. Or, you know, things that, that at the, I did visit the last policy meeting and we were still talking about some legislation that was based on, if we have another pandemic, how we staff rooms, like, and, and because that matters. And the eight hundred and fifty-plus school boards in, in districts in Illinois need to have something to refer back to. So, it is that kind of standardization for all of us, which is really helpful. And then the policy committee reviews those and then bring the update, they review them with the superintendent and then they bring the updates to the whole board. So, I think we just, yeah, we just accepted, approved a number of new policies at the January meeting.
We did.
At the, or at the February, so we probably won't have March. That's what it was. But it is, it's interesting and I refer to them regularly when I'm looking up information on how to do things the right way because they really are that culmination of best practices and you know, governmental guidance and things like that. So, they are helpful and they do guide us in our guidance.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you so much for explaining that. And so, our next big topic is this, one of our favorite words, right? Is this concept of Open Meetings Act, better known as OMA. And this really drives everything that we do in public meetings. Because as a reminder, fun little quiz, Colleen, can we just meet as a board together and do work? No, right? Those like random things that I think sometimes, you know, we're just not familiar with is that the board education cannot meet unless if we have an open meeting. So, walk us through this very, very important Illinois law that we have to abide by.
I would be happy to. I was actually doing some extra digging on it this morning too, just so I could make sure to not make any missteps. So, the OMA is the Open Meetings Act and it is one of the first things that we learn about in board work. It's one of those items on the IASB orientation, you know, first week of, of being on board. And so, I actually, you know, per Google, of course, but also the Department of Public Health website. So, OMA is, it's, and the Illinois OMA, right, is provides our public with a right of access to the meetings of a large number, like us, of governmental bodies at the state and local level. So, really, it is, it is there to make sure that the community stakeholders have access to all the information that, that goes on in the meetings because that absolutely should be public. And it also should be, you know, we shouldn't be doing things behind closed doors and things like that. So, and if you want to Google more about it, go for it. There's many, many, many pages to the law, so I will not go there. But to, again, to bring it down to what this Illinois law means to us here in Evergreen Park, right? So, what it means is we do not and cannot hold surprise or secret board meetings. We legally can't. So, for every meeting, there's a public notice posted on the website and at district office for any board meeting and also the agenda. So, everyone knows exactly what we'll be speaking of. They're usually two or three pages long because some of our board meetings are, are pretty meaty. And that is our time for the board to do the work. So, you know, for the public portion of the meeting, the public is invited. Our administration, our principals, our assistant principals, they're all there. And we started live streaming during lockdown and we've actually continued to do that. Not, even though we can have regular public meetings again, we, we saw that people were watching and that we were able to engage our community stakeholders better by offering that option. And so, even though we're not required to continue to livestream, we've decided to keep going. And then, you know, again, public, everybody knows what's going to happen at the meeting, everybody can watch what's going on at the meeting. And then afterwards, a summary of the meeting is shared in our newsletter, so board briefs and, right, absolutely. And then once we accept the minutes at the next meeting, right, that's some of the work is our approval, our consent agenda is to approve the meeting minutes from the last month, then those are all publicly posted on our 124 website as well. So, there are meeting minutes from, for a very long time going back out there. And then, you know, any board meeting, again, if you've watched or are curious, it can have both open and closed sessions. So, OMA, yeah, so OMA says we have to have that public session, but that there are a short list of, short being relative, right, there's like twenty reasons. But we can go into closed session because there really are some things that should not be handled in public session. For example, student discipline or, or teacher issues or something like that, that we really would have to respect the privacy and confidentiality of, you know, staff and students and things like that. Like, we just, again, following legal advice, like, there's just some things that cannot be done in public that we, we have to respect everybody involved. And so, like I said, there's a short list of reasons why we also could go into closed session. So, we don't have to necessarily have a closed session at every meeting. There might be things that we could just take care of in public. But then there's usually a short agenda for things that we have to talk about in closed session because of confidentiality and things like that. So, so yeah, that's the meetings. And then outside of meetings, OMA also means no replying to all when we,
Yeah, great point, yes.
We, there are some things that we just cannot discuss as a group outside of a public meeting. So, there's lots of one-way communication during the month between meetings from Dr. Woodland, from me, from anybody else. And so, there's a lot of push and pushed information. But if there's any kind of response, then it needs to be just reply to whoever sent it versus a reply all. Because otherwise, that could be considered a conversation. Yes, you can't do that. And even if the seven of us are together, there's no discussing board work when we're out to dinner together like at conference. There's no discussing board work in a group text. Though birthday reminders and Girl Scout cookie notifications are completely fair game. So, yeah, so there's a lot of things, as much as I really like talking to my fellow board members because they are just wonderful people. There are things that we cannot do and there are things that we cannot talk about when we are all together unless it's at that public meeting. So, I think a lot of people don't understand that, that we, we would not risk the litigation. And so, we, we are very careful about keeping those lanes, you know, appropriately. So, yeah.
They have to be kept separate.
Absolutely.
The one question that I had too, you know, every meeting for OMA, we also have, and this is related to policy in our Open Meetings Act, is this concept of public comment?
Yeah.
Can you walk us through public comment?
Absolutely. So, public, I should have brought my, my script that I say.
Exactly.
Every meeting, I just, and I, it's not that it's been so difficult in the la- I mean, in the last two years. I really wanted people to know what was, what is and isn't expected. I think we all do better knowing what the plan is. It's always been listed on the agenda, always. Ms. Hernandez is very good about that. And that's, again, it's part of policy, it's in our policies, to limit board comments to three minutes, the public comments. And that's whether you are agreeing with us or not agreeing with us. It does not matter. Even if we would love to hear more good things, we need to keep it to thir- just down to three minutes because there have been meetings where we have no public comments. And there have been meetings when we've had twenty people lined up for public comments. And because a board meeting is a working meeting for the board, that is our only time that we have to get together and actually do the work and hear the reports and make the decisions and We, there are some things that we just cannot discuss as a group outside of a public meeting. So there's lots of one-way communication during the month between meetings. From Dr. Woodland, from me, from anybody else. Um. And so there's a lot of push and pushed information. But if there's any kind of response, then it needs to be just reply to whoever sent it versus a reply all, because otherwise that could be considered. A conversation. Yes, you can't do that. Um. And even if the seven of of us are together. Uh, there's no discussing board work um when we're out to dinner together like at conference. Um. There's no discussing board work in a group text. Though birthday reminders and Girl Scout no- cookie notifications are completely fair game, so.
Exactly.
Um. Yeah, so there's a lot of things, as much as I really like talking to my fellow board members because they are just wonderful people. Um. There are things that we cannot do. And there are things that we cannot talk about when we are all together unless it's at that public meeting. So. Um. I think a lot of people don't understand that, that we, we would not risk the litigation. And so uh we, we are very careful about keeping those lanes, you know, appropriately, so, yeah.
They have to be kept separate.
Absolutely.
The one question that I had too, you know, every meeting for OMA, we also have, this is related to policy in our Open Meetings Act, is this concept of. Public comment.
Yeah.
Can you walk us through public comment?
Absolutely. Um. So uh. Public, I should have brought my uh my script that I say.
Exactly.
Every meeting, um, I just, and I, it's not that it's been so difficult in the la- I mean. In the last two years, I really wanted um people to know what was, what is and isn't expected. Um. I think we all do better knowing what the plan is. Um. It's always been listed on the agenda, always. Uh, uh, Ms. Hernandez is very good about that. Um. And that's, uh, again, it's part of policy, um, it's in our policies. To limit board comments to three minutes, the public comments. Um. And that's whether you are agreeing with us or not agreeing with us. It does not matter. Um. Even if we would love to hear more good things, um, we need to keep it to third, to just down to three minutes. Um. Because there have been meetings where we have no public comments. And there have been meetings when we've had twenty people lined up for public comments. And because a board meeting is a working meeting for the board, that is our only time. That we have to get together and actually do the work and hear the reports and make the decisions and and things like that. We just, uh, we would never want to um limit anybody's opportunity to speak, but we do have to kind of rein in the, the length of time. So um, like I said, even the things, you know, good, bad, indifferent, it doesn't matter, we do have to narrow it down to those three minutes. And what we always say at the meeting is we can't respond. This goes back to that uh. Command question, right? We cannot respond necessarily at the board meeting. Mostly because we probably want to go back and gather more information to answer it very thoroughly. Um. And so um it gives um the, the people that are there who can answer the questions. An answer to uh uh an opportunity to, you know, collect the pertinent information and then re- respond to that. Um, to that uh speaker, the person who's come to give public comments um fully. We really want to be able to do that as well. Because um, you know, everyone deserves a chance to be heard and also to have their questions answered. So that's a way that we can do it um faithfully um with integrity. Um. And remembering that approaching the board chain of command, right, is after those other areas. Those other levels have been exhausted as well. So just some thoughts about that.
That is a great, no, that's a great explanation. Thank you so much. I know that comes up frequently.
Oh, sure.
So our next topic is really driven around our strategic plan, which, you know, was one of my favorite experiences so far at Evergreen Park. And it's really about this concept of collaboration, working with stakeholders to seek information. About how do we make Evergreen Park the best place for kids? And so the Board of Education, you guys own the strategic plan and you adopt the strategic plan. And then you've charged me as the superintendent to really execute the strategic plan with my administrative team. But this committee really gave input on the plan, which is this collaboration piece to ensure that we have a variety of pieces of information. To really drive what I like to call systems change in an organization and really push us forward with continuous improvement. So from your perspective as a board member, can you just speak to your experience on strategic planning? And the work that you're looking forward to as well?
Um. I'd be happy to. I uh, one of the first things I did, actually, I was in. I was elected in seventeen and one of the first things I did just before I got on the board was to work on the strategic planning process. At that point. And it was um invaluable. Oh, it was such valuable information. And so great to walk through that process with fellow community stakeholders. Um. And so I was so excited to do it again. Um. We really, it was time. Um. Covid was not our friend, so we were supposed to do it in the spring of twenty twenty and that did not happen. Um. But thankfully, it did uh last year and it was a a great experience. I have spoken glowingly about my board already, but we um, we own the board, but all of the board was actually in the room. Um, with our fellow uh community members. Forty, fifty?
Yeah, fifty, community members, teachers, part of the committee.
Great, yes, absolutely. So um, so we were, we were also at the table and also listening. Um. But each of us is parents and community members as well, so we have a lot of um things that we can add. And it was, oh, it's just so great. Um, to determine what is important and and to listen and to hear what's important. And then to really structure those actions that we are going to be taking over the next couple of years. Towards those things that the entire group in consensus came to. Um, that that was, you know, that was really what was most important for us to focus on. So. Um, you know, we do own and adopt the strategic plan and uh it then helps us. To guide the actions, right? Um. It gives us the parameters to evaluate progress. You know, all of that is part of the plan as well because it is a working, a living, working plan. So um, yeah, I was really proud of our board members to be a part of it and really all the work that was done. About starting about this time last year, right? Really?
Exactly.
So it was great.
Really, it, yeah, it helps us provide focus too, which I think is so important because it's not as if ideas that come to us aren't always great ideas.
Yeah.
Also that we just can't do and prioritize everything from the board level all the way down to the classroom teacher.
Right, right.
Oftentimes, when ideas come to us, even though great in spirit or great in theory. It really allows us to pro- provide this laser focus on what are our actions associated with our goals. And make sure that we're committed to those actions within our strategic planning process. So it helps focus me, helps focus our team, and I think all the work that we're doing around making sure that our teachers. Are the best teachers in front of kids to allow change.
Action was the, we didn't want it to sit on a shelf, right? That was our, that was our charge from community members. From teachers, from uh public comments, that it not just fit like, yes, it's lovely, but. We want it, we want to see action, we want to see change and improvement. And I'm really enthusiastic about what we've done so far and what we'll continue to do. So, yeah, it was a great process.
All right. So next, we are going to talk a little bit about board elections and seat. Word. So April is a really important time for board elections. And then right after elections, we see our board members. And this is a topic, there's timelines and dates and things that we have to make sure we do and presidenting during elections, which is also. Right? And again, because, you know, we're subject to OMA, we have to make sure we're fa- following certain procedures. So I know for certain that you are officially an expert on all this, Colleen.
Oh, I don't know about that, but I'll see what I can do. Okay.
So just give us some important things that we should know about board elections and how we go about seating our board members.
Great. Um. So yes, very timely uh when this is being recorded. So um. And there's an election day to day in the city of Chicago, so uh, right? This is completely different, but you know, it's a good thing for us to know. Um. We are close, but we are not them. And we are, but so we can kind of, uh, lines can be blurred, so it is helpful to know what is for Evergreen Park. Um. So for the election coming up, it's on Tuesday, April fourth, please register, please vote. Uh, it's not just school board election, so um, but for this coming election, we have three open four-year positions. Um. And one open two-year position. So um. Our term is four years and uh we had someone leave pretty soon after they were elected. So that's why we have that strange little two-year uh position open, but that doesn't typically happen. Um. So we currently have the same number of candidates that we do for open positions for the ru- for those roles. Um. For the four positions, we have um two incumbent candidates that are current board members. So incumbent is, you know, coming back. And then we will have two new community members uh join us as well, which is great. And um, so it's strange, so bear with us because April fourth is the election. However, we don't receive the final um election results until April twenty-fifth. Which is three weeks after um the election. So uh we cannot actively act on those election results. Um, until we've gotten that final canvas, um, that final election authority go ahead three weeks after the election. So if you vote and then you wonder, well, why in the world haven't we switched everybody over in April? And I'm sure our two outgoing board members would feel the same way. However, uh, we cannot, I'm sure. Um, they have done so much for us, so I, I get it. But um, they, uh, we cannot legally seat the new board. Until after uh April twenty-fifth, so after three weeks um post-election. So um this year, we will seat the new board and the newly elected and re-elected candidate on Wednesday, May third. At a public meeting, um, it'll be what we call a special board meeting because it's not a regular um session. And the, the agenda for that night will really be uh seating that, the new board members and giving our thanks and appreciation to the folks that are parting ways with us. Um. So it's a very interesting thing. I was really reflecting on this, you know. Even in my six years, every year or every two years, we have a, a new board. So um. Every board that I've been on, you know, some people stay, some people go, you might only get one new addition or two. Um. You know, we've had people who've moved out of district mid um.
Right.
Mid-cycle, midterm, and so we will go through a process to replace them. And so we've had people come in on like off, uh, off-election years. Um. Uh, but it, it's just very interesting. So we'll have a new group uh of similar, but new. Um, coming up, uh, starting, you know, beginning of May, and that will be our, our board for the next two years until the next election cycle. So that was probably very wordy.
No, that was, see, I knew you were an expert. You really had timelines, deadlines, reasons.
All of those things. And Dr. Woodland knows I have a document called Presidenting in an Election Year. I started on Google Docs for that very reason, so.
That I'm gonna keep for my.
That's the idea.
No, that is a perfect explanation and it makes sense too when you explain it of, you know, why we have to wait until May third and what that means. And that everyone now will understand that there's particular protocol that we have to follow and that it is again because of the law. Right? That all makes. All right. So now are we are heading into our fun question period. And I like to just really interview people and kind of get their thoughts on certain things. So um. Dan, I'm just gonna double check, do we have any questions that we've had come in? I'm assuming no, or he would let me know. So when we reflect, Colleen, on, or when you reflect on Evergreen Park. What are you most proud of? I'm sure there's so much.
Biased, but I really do love Evergreen Park. So I am not a, a, a born and raised Evergreen Perker. Um, but I did the math on this one too, and I will have been here uh twenty-nine years this year. So um, I've been here longer than I've been anywhere else. Um. And uh, it really is, you know, we chose it. When my husband and I got married, we chose it because of the schools. We chose it because of, you know, so many, you know, uh, vicinity to the city. And 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 things like that. And it's just been, it's been the best choice that we could have made. I really do believe that. Um. And again, the school district was a guiding factor before we even had kids. Because we knew that a quality education and a quality uh school district is going to improve the quality of a community. So. Um, you know, really, when I joined the board, I just wanted to be a part of a really good thing. I didn't have an agenda. I didn't have. I just wanted to continue the good work, um, the good experiences that um had been happening when my students were stu- my sons were students here. So um, yeah, we've got such good people here. We've got a great geographical community, but obviously. You know, within the walls of the building, um. I'm just so proud of our students. I'm proud of our teachers. Um. I know that our strong schools, like I said, help Evergreen Park as a whole. Um, specifically, I was just, when we did the newsletter. I mentioned um in my conversation with the person who was writing the article, um, for the perspective that um. I'm really proud of us because we returned um to having in-person learning fully in twenty twenty. In the fall of twenty twenty. And I was just saying to um, to a, a person that I met today that um. You know, I know districts who didn't go back to school in person that whole year. And that was just. That's an example of our amazing teachers, um, our resilient and clever and creative students. Our supportive families and stakeholders. Like, it wouldn't have happened without all of those moving pieces. And um, I, that's, uh, again, it, it was a great thing, but it was also an example that I can point at that. Uh, I'm really proud of, yeah, of what we do and what we accomplish in this district. Kind of biased. I would like it here, yeah.
I'm seeing the, actually, there's the EP family sign behind you.
There we go. I like it, yeah.
Yes. And it just reminds me of the strength in the commitment. To the community and the kids and doing what is best for our kids and our community and our teachers. And I think that, you know, what I love about Evergreen Park is they are one of the strongest families I've ever met.
Yeah.
The family is just, it's around dedicating what needs to get done to get done. And having that shared commitment and love and passion. And at the end of the day, like our parents and our teachers. They just, they do it for kids and so does the board. And it just, it means the world to me to lead a community and a district in this capacity. So, great answer, Colleen.
Kind of proud of us. We do good things. Yeah, absolutely.
Great. So as a board president, where do you wish to be the district in three years?
This is like an interview, this is like a job interview question, right? Like. In five years. Um, uh, let's see, ideally, um. You know, happy and healthy students.
Yeah.
Um, happy and healthy teachers. Um, I say that because there is a very quiet. Um, global pandemic still happening, and that's mental health, right? And mental health challenges. Um, that I'm so grateful because we are having conversations about that now. And we would not have been having the same or as thorough or. I don't want to say loud, but is prolific, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just so grateful that we can have it. I'm saddened because we need to, right? I would, I would wish our students, that nobody ever struggled ever, but um, that's not likely as well. So um, my wish or my hope is that maybe in three years, we're even better at it. Right? At communicating about it um and making sure that we have what everyone needs to succeed. Um, so, you know, objectively speaking, three years, yeah, three years from right now, we'll be starting our next. Um, teacher contract, right? So, and I don't have to wish for this, but because I know that we will continue to be responsible. Um, we will continue as a board to make, you know, responsible decisions. And uh while providing, you know, the best resources for our student. Um. A wish. I know we'll continue to promote a good culture and positive culture.
Yes.
Through communications, absolutely. Um, I'm gonna say personally, um. All of this is personal, by the way, everybody. We as a board, uh, I should have said that long ago. So um, we as a board speak as a board, right? So I am just one opinion. I do not speak for the board. I'm speaking. Um, but um, I would love to see our um test scores improved. Um, pa- post-pandemic, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and not because I'm all about the test scores. So hear me out. Um. What I really want is to see the better test scores because that would be evident. That our students were getting the resources that they need.
Yeah.
To, you know, succeed emotionally, academically, personally, um, you know, success looks different for everybody, right? We all have our different recipes and we should. Um. And so. You know, that is a quantifiable, something we can point at to say, yes, we're doing this. And like I said, not just because I'm all about the numbers, but because that would be evidence to me that, that they're doing okay, right? So healthy teachers and um, and you said wish, so hey, you know.
Yes.
Grant money, you know, like.
All the things in the world, right?
Figure buildings and, you know, what could we possibly wish for? Um. There's, there's no end of what we could wish for, but there are some things, like I said, that I can absolutely see in the next three years that are manageable and doable. And that we're already working towards. Um. So um. That there are things that we know will happen and that's great.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I'm really glad that you hit on this, you know, mental and emotional wellbeing of a child and how it really is dedicated to um. You know, making sure that kids can learn. And I think it's not necessarily at this point saying kids need more. They really need different.
Yeah.
And how can we appeal to what they need so that they can be successful in our current academic environment?
Yep.
Yeah.
Every kid's different, right? Every student is different, every, every person, every teacher, every human. Um, so the, the blend is different for every student. Um, and it's important that we know that and work with that.
Yes. All right, now. All right, now some fun questions, ready?
All right.
So do more get paid for their service? I mean,
No.
You don't get paid for doing this?
We do not get paid for doing this. We get paid in, you know, in our heart, um, but no, we don't get paid for this. And honestly, as much as, hey, you know, an extra paycheck wouldn't be a bad idea, I really do think that's best. Because, uh, yes, obviously the work is very time-consuming and, um, some weeks, some months, like, come on. But by not being paid, our work stays more focused on the student. So if I was guiding the district and also being paid by the district, that sounds a little sketchy. That would seem, you know, kind of a conflict of interest that I would be both, you know, guiding the work of it and the allocation of budget and finance and receiving some of that. So, hmm, as much as, again, I love to get paid, I don't think that's gonna happen. And we do have limits. Actually, there's like limits to, you know, what we can receive as gifts. So there is very specific, they absolutely don't want, uh, board members to be able to be bribed or cajoled or, you know, anything like that. So it's very important that we do stay, um, focused on what is, what is board work and that is for the benefit of our students, so. So yeah, to answer the question, no, we do not get paid.
All right, and one last, final, fun one. So who is the board's only employee?
Dr. Woodland is our only employee. Uh, the board hires one employee, that's the superintendent. We are in charge of the hiring process for that, um, for that position, which we successfully completed to bring Dr. Woodland to us for academic year twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, and we do not employ any other dis- uh, any other employees. The district does, and again, we govern and guide, but we don't, we are only responsible for one employee. We could participate in hiring committees. I think we may have, probably all have, um, but then we're just a member of the committee. We are just one person at the table and our opinion is not, it's just feedback, right? It's not decision-making. And then the other part of that too is we only evaluate one, one person, uh, one position. And so the board, um, one of our roles is to evaluate the performance of, uh, Dr. Woodland, and she's doing great. But, um, so that is our responsibility. We do not evaluate anybody else. We do have educators on the board, um, educators in different districts. And so they do know education, but that is not our role and that's not our strength. So, um, we leave the evaluation of, you know, of staff members to their immediate supervisors like any other organization would. So, so Dr. Woodland is our only employee and, uh, and then she manages all the other ones, so, yeah.
Such a fun, fun topic. I think a lot of times people don't know that, so it's a fun one. So if I were as the superintendent, I then would bring like a recommendation to the board to maybe hire a principal. And then the board votes yes or no to that recommendation, correct?
Right. And so that's why it is helpful sometimes for us to be on the committee, like it might be able to, we might be able to shed some light in closed session because it's a hiring practice, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But, um, ultimately, the decision is not on the board. We have to approve, approve it in board action in an open meeting. But yeah, we don't, we make the final decision, but we don't get to that process, we don't get to that point in the process without everybody else.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Well, Colleen, this was so much fun. I really appreciate you sharing all your wealth of knowledge with us. And it's just great to have you and to have the experience of really truly understanding what is board work and what is not. That I really appreciate that the board that I work with and serve with, um, really understands what board work is and what board work is not, which helps like keep clear lines of communication and the functionality of our everyday at the highest level because that allows for kids to be successful too, so, super important. Any other last bit of information for good of the order that you'd like to share?
I am just so grateful for the opportunity to actually shed some light on some of these questions. So I hope that the folks who may listen to it today or, um, going forward, um, find something useful. I mean, truly, again, I have, I don't think I knew as much as I could have or should have when I came on as a board member either. So, um, I don't think anybody need, everybody, I don't think everybody needs to run for a board position to also be interested in how it works. So, um, so I'm happy to, um, be here so I can shed some light on that. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. So this is just a reminder to everyone for more information on our strategic plan, board policy, board practices. We have a whole tab dedicated to our Board of Education, including all the committee work that they sit on. Please visit our website. If you have any follow-up questions for either myself or Colleen, please reach out for us, to us directly. And we wish you a happy evening. Thank you so much, signing off for now.
Thanks so much.